Call to order, the meeting of the Southern Regional Board of Education is called to order. Adequate notice as required by the Public Meetings Act. But provided on December fifth, twenty twenty-two. By posting as notice with the respective clerks of the city of Planoville, Earl Stock and its township of West Amel. And advertised on December the eighth, twenty twenty-two, or I assume it's twenty twenty-three, when the Hunter County Democrat print Times newspaper. I will call this.
Senator Bosh?
Here.
Mark Dennis?
Here.
Gina Boshetti?
Here.
Ryan Key?
Yeah.
Kevin Kowalski?
There.
Michael Charles?
Here.
Megan Warner?
Here.
Ronnie Tom Marino?
Here.
Ben Gallo?
Uh, here, let's stand for the plan. By the way, the leaders of the United States of America. Through the Republic, for which stands, foundation under individual diversity and justice law.
Okay, next up, our PTO, PTA, LAEF update, so Mr. Dickie, you're up.
Good evening, everyone, Tom Dickie representing the LEF today. Uh, quick updates. Top day coming up September thirtieth at Harren Glenn again. Looking forward to seeing all of you there and the whole community. We are also doing for the second year family day. It's a nine-hole event on the twenty-ninth. So for any of you who have kids that are aspiring golfers. Or just want to walk around on a nice day, come on out. Um, the only other update we have, it's been a quiet summer, we did approve a grant for late August when the teachers are back early in service. Person official math training. All of that quiet, and we'll see you all on the phone.
Thank you. Yeah, it's hard.
Hey, guys, Jessica Hartigan, um, South Hundredan Regional School District PTO. Um, it, we, we don't have a lot to report outside of, um, we filed all the necessary forms to change the name, we're just waiting on the state. It takes, it's been taking a while, so we're hoping that, um, we can move forward soon because we need that document to change all of our banking information. Um, and once we have that document, we can move forward with everything, but the new bylaws are written, they're done, they've been approved by our board. Um, insurance has been changed over, membership toolkit has been changed over, et cetera. So we're moving in, in the right direction and we're just busy planning all of the orientation events and all the back-to-school events. And we're just working on that and submitting donation forms and that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, any correspondence? So that brings us to approval of minutes. Um, I got a motion to approve items A, B, the minutes of last month's meeting. So, Brian, thank you, second please. Second by Martha, thank you. Any discussion on those minutes? Uh, we can, we can vote all in favor. All right. Anyone abstaining? Okay, uh, next up, um, we have two reports, so, uh, is that any error person?
Yeah, so we'll be, Keanu's going to be coming up and doing our presentation of the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. Where we know it at the NJGPA and then all the access for our English language to learn.
Good evening, members of the board and the public. So it's very exciting to begin reporting, um, this will be the first report of our academic achievement. And, um, we saw the achievement scores go in the right direction, so we are excited to, um, wait for the NJSLA scores, which hopefully will get sometime by the end of the summer, um, or certainly by the end of July, we'll start to, um, look at the data and publish the reports. And then the information will be going home, the individual school reports. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and, um, just go through a little bit of the overview of the demographics of the district as of June seventeenth. Uh, you'll see this is posted to the board agenda, so you can review it on your own time. This is just a demographic of our overall subgroups, um, so you can see how the state breaks it down. And then these subgroups are broken down individually by their score categories as well as overall scores. So the NJ, um, GPA is a, the proficiency, so the statute requires the state graduation proficiency, excuse me. Is assessment is administered for all eleventh grade students. Um, it is designed to measure the extent which students are graduation-ready in English and Language Arts. The readiness is reported separately in each component, meaning the ELA component is separated from the math component. Um, the ELA component is aligned to the tenth grade standard, so we, um, this is given in March. Um, but the, um, proposal is, or the assumption is that the students met all of the grade level standards by the end of their tenth grade. Um, and then you'll see the mathematics component is aligned to the algebra, um, common course or com, uh, you flip that, turn the. Oh, sorry, and geometry standards. So, um, just so you know, by the end of tenth grade, the state expects our students to be proficient in Algebra One and Geometry. And then there's multiple pathways for those students who don't meet this, um, the state requirement, they can retake it. Um, they could also in the summer or the fall. And then some of our students choose to do another pathway, which is, um, there's a variety of different substitute tests. Um, or they can complete a portfolio appeal. And when they complete a portfolio, they work with a specific teacher, uh, for most of the year. And then the teacher submits the portfolio score to the state, the state reviews it. So the state does provide, as I said, three different pathways, um, some of those other competency tests are SATs or ACT scores. Um, but it is all laid out on the state website. So there are two performance levels, um, that you'll see when the scores come up, not graduation-ready. And those are scores that fall between six fifty and seven twenty-four and graduation, um, ready, seven twenty-five and eight fifty. And again, the same scoring for both ELA and math. So here's where the good news comes in, um, this is a comparison for our students, um, that are graduation-ready in the district as compared to the state. So you can see we are above the state average, which is excellent in, um, both English and math. Um, we, only when you look at our district, have twelve percent, um, who are not ready and then forty-two percent in math. So these scores again just give us information for planning for next year. Um, and we did know, uh, a lot of this information going in based on last year's results and this year's results. And you know, as you've heard me speak, um, over the ten minutes, months I've been here, all about our focus on our achievement scores. So here's just some comparisons, um, from last year to this year. You can see that, um, certainly a few less students took the test, we're only at sixty-five. Um, and again, those state numbers are very similar, but you can see just the comparison between, um, the last year's twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four results. And that was math, and this is, that was ELA and this is math. So this is a little bit hard to see, um, I apologize, um, but the bar graphs, what you see are all students, uh, versus economically disadvantaged students, students with disabilities and Hispanic students. When you look at this, um, on your own screen, or if you go back and review it after the meeting, you would see that there's, um, it's very difficult to see on the screen right there. But our numbers, the N equals, those are just, those are the counts of the students. So students with disability, even though it looks like, um, we went down, uh, it is the difference between seven students and twelve students. So again, because we're such a small difference, uh, district, our bar graph can move quite, quite a lot, um, just because of the number of students. That was ELA, this is math, and again, it's all students, economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities and Hispanic students. Again, the students with disabilities, even though we went down, we went from four students to three students. So it is a much, a very small pool of numbers, um, and sometimes, uh, or most of the time, being a small district helps. Uh, but sometimes in situations where we're talking about one student's score, um, it can reflect, uh, it looks very different visually. So do we know the students who have shown their ready, or excuse me, do we know the students who have not shown the readiness readiness and what do we do for them? So there's a link there and it goes into a lot of detail about what those alternative pathways are. I won't need to, I don't need to go into it this evening, um, but you can see as I described, the three different pathways. Um, and once we've gotten these results, then I work with the school counselors and, um, we create a path for those specific students. And again, as I said, they're assigned a teacher who works with them on the portfolio and they only have to create a portfolio in math or ELA. It's not necessarily both, um, and those portfolios are a collection of different assignments. It's not really a portfolio like an art portfolio, um, that you might think of, but it's a collection of different artifacts of achievement from reading assessments and tests and, um, math assessments and different tests. This is, um, you might have heard, called it the WIDA access before, we refer to it now in the state of New Jersey, just as the access, because that is the test. WIDA is the company like Pearson who creates it, um, and this is a little bit of information about the access. It's given annually to our multilingual learners, it's given also in March, um, so what we actually this year with the assessment calendar as it was, the test ran back-to-back, and so next year we will move, um, the access earlier in March and then move the NJGPA a little bit later. So those students in eleventh grade aren't taking a test back-to-back. Um, there are four domains, reading, listening, writing and speaking. And just so you know, our ESL curriculum is aligned to each one of those different domains. So if a student is receiving services because they have been identified as a multilingual learner, they, when they meet with their ESL teacher, these are specifically what they focus on, um, and then the results are provided, uh, by the domain and the composite score. And you will see that there are six levels and, um, to exit or to be considered, um, you do not consider it into the ESL program, you need a four-point-five, um, composite to exit the program. So this is the twenty-three versus the twenty-four results, um, and again, this has to do with a lot of flux with the population. Um, this year alone, I know at one elementary school, we got four new multilingual learners after January. So those students come in at varying levels of, um, English proficiency, and so it really doesn't, what we're looking at in these scores, again, you're looking at very, very small numbers. And it's very difficult to read those numbers on level five, the bridging, but we're talking about three students at fifty-five point one percent, and we're talking about two students at four point six percent. Um, but we have assessments throughout the year that help prepare our students. We've actually put into place, um, two programs, um, online programs that measure proficiency and then help the students not only prepare for the access, but also to build that stamina, very similar to what we did with, um, NJSLA preparation. So I work closely with the high school and middle school ESL teacher, um, to assess students and then give them the opportunities to get online during, whether they have a class that's scheduled specifically for ESL students or whether they are integrated into another class, a math class or an English class, um, oftentimes with the ESL stu- teacher co-teaching with the general education teacher. Um, these are just some of the conclusions, uh, we did better as a district than we have in previous years, so that's excellent. Um, we're better than the state average, I scored better in the content areas. The, uh, multi-learner population is too small to report on the NJGPA or by grade level. So that's why some of our subgroup scores, um, the bar graph, as I said, look very, you know, it looks drastic or it looks like we went down where we're really talking about one student. Um, access for L's results shows some movement between grade levels, which is evidence of our students' growth. So again, we're moving in the right direction, we know with the reconfiguration and we know with, um, different things that we're doing to put into place that are standards-based and allowing that access for all of our L's multilingual learners, ESL students to access that grade-level curriculum. It gives them the opportunity to, for us to really understand, you know, what is it and how fast can they progress through the program? So this is how we utilize the data, very similar to our NJSLA, um, we look and identify trends in programming. So that's something I've already started to do with the principals this summer. Um, we're looking at teachers using resources and materials that are guides or geared specifically to those six or those domains that we were talking about, and then measuring their progress along the same type of measurement, um, of those six levels. And again, we provide professional development, all of our ESL teachers go to an annual conference, um, that specifically is geared for ESL teachers. And so they're always coming back with great ideas to share, um, for professional development. Uh, we are going to spend some time at our new teacher orientation with a training or an overview session on how to differentiate and meet the needs of our multilingual learners in our classrooms so that teachers can feel prepared for small group instruction and differentiation, just as we would with anything. Um, and the, oh, go ahead, and that's fine, and then here are some of the next steps. And again, um, the next steps and interventions and strategies that we're putting into place to support our multilingual learners look very similar. You've seen many of these because many of the programs, the curriculum have resources and materials that are aligned, um, to multilingual learner strategies and structures, classroom learning targets that we know are successful with all students. Um, some of the programs also, most of them have a Spanish component, uh, most of our students, um, minus one, um, their first language at, is spoken at home, is Spanish. So a lot of that is taken into consideration as I look at the programs we choose and making sure, again, as I've said, that all students have access, just like we look at programs that can meet the needs of our gifted learners and our special education students. We want to make sure that all of our subgroup populations have access and can be successful. I think that's it, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has about the NJGPA or the access for L's.
Actually, I do have a question and then I'll open up the board, but a question and a kind of comment. On the, uh, New Jersey GPA, um, the math score, the fifty-seven point six percent. And while that is higher than the state average, um, you mentioned, and I want to make sure I'm understanding, what's the group that was being tested? Is that the, the, the group, is that, are those scores from the students who graduated this year or are those scores from this year's eleventh grade?
Those are from this year's eleventh grade.
Okay.
Because this year's, because we take the, um, NJGPA in March, we get the scores, uh, much sooner than the, the NJSLA, which we take in May. So, and obviously with those scores of math, we know, we thank the LAEF for approving, um, the grant. We, uh, this year I will spend some time looking at our math curriculum and make sure that there's a lot of, um, alignment. We're looking at standards, we're looking at all the things that we did, um, we spent a lot of time this year looking at the elementary. Um, so that's really our focus this year.
Now, the reason I asked about the cohort was because up until maybe two years ago, we did Algebra One, Algebra Two, Geometry. And so our students were at a disadvantage if you have to have geometry, you need to have Algebra One and Geometry and then tenth grade. That put us at a disadvantage, which is why we switched those, I just wasn't sure whether that was an, that was reflected in that number.
Yes, certainly are the, the pathway is something that, um, we have looked, we're looking at and addressing because we want to make sure that our students are set up for success and, um, that they're not, it's not a, they're not taking what they're going to be tested on at the same time. If you're taking a assessment in March, you certainly have not, um, been exposed or mastered all of the expectations. Thanks.
Comment I was going to make was just that the English in twenty-twenty-two, as we did the review of the English language, the, you know, the, the ELL program. And, and so it's nice to see that, you know, that, you know, we, I feel like all of those systemic reviews are done and that money was spent. And so it does seem like that is reflected in, you know, improvements in sports.
Absolutely.
Does anyone else on the board have a question?
I.
Is the state providing any best practice in the difference, the difference between the scores of ELA and the scores of math? Pretty dramatic on the state level as well. Are they providing any best practices, uh, or providing any analysis of their data that we can use and leverage our program?
Absolutely, absolutely, and those, um, are oftentimes, um, specific reports that we can get and we can run, um, and when we get the NJSLA, they're called the evidence reports and the summaries, so we can actually see how our students, um, perform by standard. And, um, and math not only has standards, but they also have practices, so we can break it down that much further. So the work that, um, I've been doing with Ms. McKnight this summer is actually looking at how, um, the big ideas math curriculum aligns with the standards and making sure that our teachers understand the importance of the, um, the continuum of the curriculum. Oftentimes, um, if it's not an expectation to follow it specifically, some teacher may say, oh, you know, I really want to do geometry at the end of the year because, you know, I know that it's really important that we get through these Algebra One concepts. So we're making sure that all of our curriculum is aligned and I'm working with the teachers. It'll be the focus of their professional learning communities and their after-school meetings to make sure that the program we have in place, which is, um, highly respected and does receive, uh, marks, uh, I think they're green marks on ed reports. Uh, we want to make sure that the teachers understand and know how to teach and the, the concepts and the skills, the way that the state is going to assess the kids. And that's mainly the shift, oops, excuse me, the shift in the thinking. Thank you. Gina?
Um, on the page of the presentation where you had the, uh, the charts that showed the different subgroups and then the first one was all students.
Mm-hmm.
And the rates of, uh, those who are graduation-ready, all students is just that, all students?
Yes.
So do you have the, um, the numbers for students who don't fall into the, the subgroups? Like who are not economically disadvantaged, Hispanic or have disabilities? You know what I'm saying, like that was one.
Yes, yeah, um, yes, I can pull that data out, um, typically the state asks us to report on those subgroups so that we can, it's oftentimes tied to our Title One grant money. Um, and so when we break down those subgroups, that then gives, lets the state know that we have this many students, so we might need some extra support and some extra money, we apply, um, for the, in the Title One grant. It also gives us the opportunity with other grants that the state provides, there's a specific grant for our multilingual learners. So based on the number of our multilingual learners, based on their assessment scores, then we can let the state know and they can say, oh, okay, so you have this amount of money, you could use it for training for your teachers, you can use it for supplies, you can use it for resources. Um, and so we spend a lot of time once we get those scores. But in terms of breaking out the students that are, do not fall in those subgroups, you can, um, I can get that information too. You could actually add it up and then subtract it from the whole number because that's the whole thing, but I'll go ahead and put that together for you.
Yeah, it just carries if you have it, yeah, it's all important to, the thing.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
I have sort of a general question. It, it said, I don't know if you would be able to answer it, but it just, it kind of got me thinking. Students that we have to send out of district because of, um, we're not able to provide what they need. Do those students get measured and assessed and stuff too? Yeah, do we have, do, I mean, since we're, we, we pay.
Yeah.
Right, do we? So do we get, are they factored into this number?
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Unless, and sometimes you'll hear when we get to the achievement report, we talk about the LM, which is an alternate assessment based on if a student's disability doesn't allow them to take the test, but that's a really low number.
Okay.
The majority of them that are out of district are taking and it does count towards our core.
Okay, so some of the kids tested are not using curriculum that's from somewhere else.
And there is another, um, we only had one student this year, um, in our, in our multilingual learner population because there is something called an alternate access, which is for a student who, um, very similar to the DLM, who based on their special education classification and their disability, then they're given an alternate. They still are scored in the six, in the four domains and the six levels, um, but they do have an alternate test and that actually is not online. Um, the kindergartner test, the kindergarten test as well is not online, uh, but as I say, we have some supports in place, um, for students to be able to practice. So the first time they're taking an online test isn't with the access.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Graham. Um, so now we'll move to the superintendent's report.
All right, so it's July and then usually people think there's not a lot going on, but there's a lot going on. Um, it's a busy time for us, so I just wanted to kind of give some updates and reminders. Um, we had sent this out at the end of the year, it's posted on our website, but, um, just a reminder, a lot of, you know, conversations about when will we find out? You know, when, you know, teachers and Google information about who's my homeroom teacher, who's my schedule, you know, how do I get my schedule? August fourteenth is the magic date, we'll be providing all that information in on-course. But I do want to share at the bottom, the bullet that, if you remember last year when we rolled out on-course, we had an annual registration process where parents had to go in and complete all the necessary, you know, verify their information and complete all the necessary forms, you know, the publicity release, the acceptable use, all that technology, all those different things. So that same thing will happen again, you'll be getting communication on August first about how to do all that. Um, if you did it last year, it wouldn't be any real difference, um, it will all be done in on-course. But what we're saying, the parents, and I will remind you a lot about this through text messaging and emails, is if it's not done by the fourteenth within those two weeks, then obviously when your child goes in, they're going to get a pop-up to look up their schedule to say, oop, annual registration hasn't been done. So that's when they'll be getting on you to say, you need to get this done ASAP so I can find out who my teacher is. So we'll do constant reminders, but that's really a good help for us just to get all those documents ahead of time, everything's stored in on-course and then we're ready to go for the school year. The other thing I wanted to mention is, and you've heard me talk about a new system that we're going to, which we're excited about called Parent Square. Um, so in the August first communication about on-course and the annual registration, there'll also be information in there about parent, Parent Square. Specifically, it's going to be replacing School Messenger, which is the service that we've used in the past for when, like, let's say I email you or I send you a text message or I even call you like on a snow day, um, this is going to replace all that. The advantage is there's a mobile app that is, you know, very similar to kind of Facebook social media. So it's, it's hopefully going to be a game changer for you to be easily, to be able to find things on one scroll on your phone. Obviously there's, you know, you can go to a URL and there's a website and all those different things, but I figured that most folks will have it on their phone. So things like mass notifications and urgent alerts, um, there's good, and right now, this is honestly just touching the surface. There's a lot of other features that we'll be rolling out throughout the year, which I think parents will find extremely beneficial. But we're going to start out kind of minimal and then expand, so mass notifications, so, you know, communication for me or your building principals. If there's urgent alerts like lockdowns, emergency situations, all that stuff will come through. Um, there's a mobile app for iOS and Android, you'll receive messages via phone, email, text or app notification. So when you download the app, it will be very similar like Facebook, where if something's posted on the app, you're going to get a notification and you'll know to go in there and take a look and see whether it applies. It also has the ability to communicate, you can set it up in your preferred language, you could also set it up when you want to receive it. Some parents don't like getting emails during the day, you know, unless obviously it's an emergency email, but they don't like getting numerous emails during the day because they're at work, they don't want to be bothered. They could set it up where they get a digest at six, six PM at night, so when they're home, boom, 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 whatever came in for today will be in one place. You can kind of look through it and decide what's important and what's not. You totally will have the ability to set your preferences how you want it set. You want to get everything right away instantaneously, you want to get it into digest, anything that's emergency-related will go. You want to get everything right away instantaneously, you want to get it into digest, anything that's emergency related will go through immediately. Even if you set it up for a digest, it will be overwritten by that and you'll get it immediately. Um, we've also navigated the parent square for all of our websites. So if you haven't looked at our websites lately, you'll notice. They were launched July first, they look a lot different. Um, like I said, there's a lot of other pieces, there's two-way communication. That we're going to be introducing, there's the ability to volunteer for things and sign up, parent conferences, all different pieces that will kind of slowly roll out. Throughout the year, which we hope that you'll find very useful. Instead of search my email, go to the website, trying to find, going the different avenues. So more to come on that and that communication. Um, bus assignments, so Friday, August twenty-third. So if your child, um, is eligible to get transportation services. We'll provide information for you to be able to log into on course again, and you'll be able to find out the bus number, pickup time. The part time as far as when they're gonna get home in the afternoon and then where the stops are located. You'll have all that information. I want to put a plug in for kindergarten camp. So if you know of anyone right now, you know, I think we have about thirty-one people sign up for K Camp. Uh, we have fifty-three kindergartners coming in next year. So if you know folks out there, I've been texting, I've been emailing and bothering them. I'll probably do a phone call, I was thinking this week. Um, because we're really trying to nail down the registration by the end of July, just for our teachers, or our kindergarten teachers are running kindergarten camp. Ones in the audience right now, uh, Monday, August nineteenth through the twenty-second. At the new elementary school, we'll be from eight thirty to eleven thirty. Like I said, we will be providing transportation for students to. You know, get transportation during the school year. So it's just a great way to get a leg up before all the other kids come in. To kind of really, one, get used to the building if they're in it for the first time, and two, just the routines of the teacher and navigating all that. You know, riding the bus, all those different things before the school year starts. Um, and then these are just the reminders about all the orientation programs that have been coming up. Um, in the month of August, we'll continue to remind folks as we get closer with more details. We have all of our things that are set up. This document, the Q and A is on the website, so it's available for folks to get. Um, it's also, once we start getting into parent square, August first, it's on there as well. So a lot of different things will be happening as far as orientation programs for our students. I've said this before, but just a lot of options for before and after care. So again, you know, depending upon what your level of interest is, YMCA, which will be at the elementary school, Lambertville Academy. Um, kids that will be at the West Amo School next year will also have access and transportation. So, um, you know, there are links for you to be able to register so you're all set, you know, for this upcoming school year. Uh, this is something new that just went out recently. So if you remember in the spring, we talked about high impact tutoring and we were fortunate enough. To receive grant money for that. So when we kind of looked at our balances at the end of the year, we realized we had some money left over. So our plan was to use it for some after school tutoring services in September and October. However, we were contacted by the state about ten days ago saying, you need to use it by August thirtieth or we take it back. So we came up, sat down, talked about some ideas, what's something we could put out quickly to help support students. So we decided that we're gonna have a jumpstart and then moving to the middle school program, it will be geared for our rising fifth, sixth and seventh grade students. Um, fifth and sixth, it's a great way to bring our kids together, again, before the school year starts, obviously because we're bringing both schools together. So it's gonna take place August fifth through Thursday, August eighth, eight thirty, eleven thirty at the West Samuel School. Um, the seventh grade moving up is gonna be taking place the following week, twelfth to the fifteenth. Um, from eight thirty to eleven thirty, again, we're looking at transportation if folks need it. Um, and then each day, it'll be a variety of different activities, a lot of focus on team building and kids getting to know each other. And focus on academics as well, and then social emotional learning. Um, so there is a registration form, as you know, I always send this out the next day to everyone, which I will. There is a Google form just so we know who's signing up and then also who we need to provide transportation for. So I know summers are busy and I know this went out late, we didn't really have a choice. We wanted to make sure we could do something that would be useful for our students, but obviously we had to do it before the end of, um, August, so we got it out there as quickly as we could. Uh, just construction, so again, a lot of things happening, just update. Our contractor started today, refitting the terrazzo floors. I was over there, it was going great, they were coming up really, really nice. We anticipated completion of about seven to ten days for that process. Um, furniture was installed, you know, over the last couple of weeks. On August fifth and sixth, our technology vendor is gonna come back and do the installations in the gym and the makerspace. Um, there's projectors and different things that are going in there. Um, and then August seventh, our flooring contractor will be returning just to finish. Right now, the gym floor still needs to be done, which will be done in a day or two. The hallway around the gym, and then there's some other transition areas that just need to be completed. So they'll be finishing that up on the seventh, eighth and ninth. We have letters for the outside gym wall that are coming, that will say South Hundred Regional Elementary School, should be arriving by next week and then they'll be installed. We just got our outdoor signage, so we're posting the parking lot in front of the school as well as the one in front of the gym. To let folks know between seven and four thirty that it's for South Hundred Regional employees only, just so we reserve all our parking. Um, security cameras, we're just waiting on internet and we're right now, um, waiting on Comcast. So you know how that goes. We've been working with them for two months to try to get them out. They're saying it will be done by the end of July, just to put in their switch. And change everything over. And as soon as we have internet, then they'll come and hook up all of our cameras, both inside and outside. Um, we're working on, we've ordered a new outdoor sign, South Hundred Regional Elementary School sign, hoping to have it installed by the first day at school. Um, and then we also ordered security planners. So in front of the building, if you're in the parking lot. Um, facing the classrooms, we ordered, um, about seventy-six inch long. Security, big heavy planner that will go all the way down their sidewalk. So in essence, acting as bower, if you're familiar with that concept. Um, but a little bit more aesthetically pleasing than bowers going down the front of the school. So we're excited about that as well. Uh, we have a ribbon cutting scheduled for August fifteenth in the morning. Uh, right before we start kindergarten camp, the fine week, and then as soon as the floor is done, which I should have a better idea by the end of July. We will be setting open house dates and there'll be multiple, so not just one, we'll probably do one on a weekend and one during the week. In the afternoon and in the evening, and it will be just open for anyone, anyone that wants to come in, parents, kids, community members, whoever. Wanda and I will be there just facilitating and you can tour the building, go in classrooms. Um, you know, and really get a feel to see the transformation, which is pretty amazing, um, compared to what it looked like this time last year. So more to come on that. You've been seeing, hopefully the pictures on Facebook, but things are really coming along with the five-eight building. You can get a feel that, that the exterior of the building is, you know, pretty much set, we're ready for steel, so you'll start seeing that happening. Um, we had our construction meeting there last week. Every time we meet, we now meet on site, right in this little trailer right here, and then we walk. And go around and walk inside the building and go through the entire thing as part of our meeting. So, um, we're, we're making great progress. Obviously, it's been hot for the masons over the last month, but, uh. They're really cranking it out, you can, you know, obviously this is the gym and this is the classroom wing, or this is a two-story wing. So we're working on the second story, you can see the stair shafts here for the stairwell, and then there's the elevator and then the front of the building. You know, you got your science rooms, your steam room, music room, and then library area, front office and here. The same thing on this side, so it's really coming along, we're excited, making good progress and, uh, you know, we're on schedule, it's great. I want to talk about preschool because this has come up in a couple of our meetings. Um, so just to kind of rehash, so everyone's aware. We have three sections of preschool that will be held at the West Samuel School this year, along with our fifth and sixth graders. And then two sections at the South Hundred Regional Elementary School. Uh, for two thousand twenty-five and beyond, we anticipate a six section. And kind of maxing out around that number for that six section moving forward, which means we'd have six sections of preschool on an annual basis. So if you remember, we talked about having community input sessions. So I've actually selected dates that are now on the calendar, that will be holding three community input sessions for future facility planning for the preschool. At these sessions, Andrew and I will present options with educational and fiscal pros and cons. You know, and a bunch of different options. So we're looking at Tuesday, September twenty-fourth at seven, Tuesday, October eighth, Monday, October twenty-first. They'll all be via Zoom to make it easier and more convenient for parents. Um, they'll all be recorded and they'll all be posted, so if parents can't attend but want to listen, um, everything will be on the website. So I just wanted to put that out there so the folks are aware, you know, that that is coming. And, uh, obviously I'll put out some more formal notifications as we get closer to August, so parents hopefully can mark their calendars. I checked the district calendars and the building calendars and tried to work around, so hopefully there will be some dates where at least folks can make one or two of the sessions if interested.
Any questions from the board?
Or the preschool planning sessions, will that be similar to our strategic planning sessions where we'll have. Board, board members there.
No, that will be, that will just be Andrew and I, if a board member attends, they would be attending as a member of the community. Um, but obviously the board is welcome to listen for the recordings.
Will that be more presentation or Q and A?
Oh, so the plan would be, um, presenting the different options. Cost implications, educational implications, and then seeing what people have to say. And then bringing all that back to you guys and then hopefully, you know, at some point later in the fall, we'll make, the board will make some decisions on where we're going to move and follow.
Can I ask a question about the kindergarten camp? Are all the kindergarten teachers going to be there? And so the students who attend will be with the teacher?
They'll find out that week before who their teacher is.
Okay.
And then they'll be with them on that Monday.
Thank you.
And we'll also have, the counselor is gonna be there, our nurse will be there, so a variety of different support groups as well.
Does that replace, you used to do the thing where you like took the bus to school, but just to get your, does that replace that?
Yeah, we haven't done that a while since I've been here.
For a while. Right.
And that's the goal, to really get them acclimated if they've never ridden a bus before. What it's like if they've never been in that building before, because obviously we have students coming to that building, to get a week under their belt before everybody else. And it's free.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, with that, we will open it up for the, uh, public comment period. Um, so, uh. If you have, uh, something you'd like to bring before the board, we are here to respectfully listen to your, to your comments. Just ask that you come to the podium, give us your name and the community that you're from, and, uh, try to keep your comment in about three minutes. Uh, does anyone have something they'd like to bring before the board, listen? All right, do we have anyone on?
We do have one, and it's from, uh, Shannon Burkett. Um, and it is about, please join the South Hundred Regional Education Association this Wednesday at six PM. At the Lambertville Free Public Library for craft activity, snacks, and a summer reading checking. All K five students registered for the upcoming school year will receive three summer reading books, key for use in your own home libraries. Thank you to the district for your support and assistance in making this event possible. We look forward to seeing our district families there. And I'll send a reminder out about that.
There is no, uh, there is no comment. I'll close this first period of public comment, there will be another opportunity later in the meeting. Uh, for public comment, and we'll go to our committee reports and start with the buildings and grounds, Mr. Warner.
Right, so Tony gave us a pretty comprehensive update on the status of our building, the construction, really excited. To, uh, see the new elementary school coming to a close there, can't wait to, uh, see what it looks like inside. You'll see, we have, um, we just become a normal staple, we have, you know, items for auction for sale that, um. Mr. Albiner, you know, works diligently on listing, um, and we discussed in our committee as well that. Part of that work, you know, kept reporting, having to pay for movers, move us back, you know, into LPS, um, which is, you know, a huge cost even, so. You know, um, Mr. Albiner's efforts as always are. Very much appreciated. You also see the resolution on here for, um, approving the name changes to the school building, which is a. Cool moment of a coalescence of what we've been working on for many years now. Which is, which is very exciting, that I think it's a very special moment for the community. Um, with that, um, I'm gonna make a motion to move items A through R.
Second, please. Second, second by Kevin, thank you. Any discussion on items A through R?
So I had a question about the tiny mobile robot.
Yeah.
Contract.
Yep.
Um, I was excited when I saw the word robot, because I thought maybe it meant we were getting like a robotics program or something for students. I was a little surprised by what it actually is. Um, so I was wondering if we could talk a little bit about how that came up, like where that came from. Um, I, I looked at the website for the company. And it looks like it, like the first thing on their website is more geared toward like lining roads and stuff. Um, so I was just kind of wondering, is this something new? Like, do they support school districts or any, you know? Like, were we cold called? How did we, how did we come up with the?
Sure, so it came from Mr. Miller Key, actually.
That worked, director.
Yeah, uh, yeah, thank you. Um, he looked at three different companies, and this one was the best, it cost the best price. Um, and again, it was something that also came as collaboration between the maintenance department, again, as we expressed by email. Uh, we are down in depth to be in some physical help, should save time for the employee to play, paint the appeals to be able to put their efforts for public things. We are down one, uh, staff, and then it also will obviously.
That was, um, my question was, uh, are we permanently down that one FTE? Did we reduce that count or is that a temporary situation?
Right now, we'll see, once we have the five-eight building, obviously we're gonna have additional square footage and there's requirements from the state you have to follow. With custodial coverage, but for this year at least.
Okay.
We're definitely gonna be down, we're not replacing.
Because I know that in the resolution, we just showed the one annual payment, but when you add it all, yeah, there's.
Right, if we continue, if we keep it over multiple years.
Okay, so is it like a lease?
Yep.
So we can.
The option to, thanks.
Okay. Okay. Um, and then I saw in some of the contracts, uh, we, I saw something for, um. Bond council services, is that, are those just like typical renewals and things that we already have?
Doesn't mean we're necessarily gonna use it.
Got it, okay, that's what I was.
Even purchases like what we approved last month with the, uh, infrastructure for IT, that was done for these purchases, that should all be reviewed by bond.
Got it, okay. If not, because we're going to go issue a bond.
Anytime that we look to do something along those lines.
Okay.
It's going to be reviewed by bond council and makes.
So we, we keep someone on retainer or on.
Are there any other questions? If there are no other questions, let's move.
I just don't love the idea of spending money on that robot, so I'm, I'm gonna say no.
Mark Dennis?
Yes.
You didn't say it?
Yes.
Right, yes.
Yes.
Are you gonna want it?
Yes.
Ronnie, it's up right now?
Yes.
Tim Gallo? Yes. Uh, personnel committee, uh, Mr. Shet.
So the personnel committee met on July seventeen at seven thirty, we met virtually. Uh, we discussed and reviewed the superintendent's recommendations for appointments, resignations and adjustments. And additionally, we reviewed the recommendations for extracurricular and sitebook appointments. For the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five school years. The committee was informed of the current openings in the district for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, which currently consists of two paraprofessional. Positions, that's a tongue twister, um, at the South Hundred Regional Elementary School. All of their positions are filled at this time. And then the committee also discussed the creation of a new position or a potential new position of athletic state supervisor. Um, which would be for the fall, winter and spring seasons. The athletic state supervisor would supervise after school events, one to two days per week, Monday through Saturday. And compensation would be two thousand three hundred and sixty-nine for the fall and spring seasons and two thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine for the winter. Season, and it's a little bit more for the winter because of increased, um, games and activities. And then finally, Tony, Tony noted that the new teacher orientation will take place August nineteenth through twenty-second. And that all staff return on August twenty-seventh. If I don't make a motion.
Um, yeah, we do have to.
To the first two, right?
Move to approve the A and B, yes.
Sorry.
Thank you, so made, so moved, and they need a second on that?
Second.
Second by Megan, thank you. Any discussion on items A and B? I'll just say one thing because I'd be remiss otherwise, uh, um, so we have a soccer program which probably started here about ten years ago. Started as a club. Started as a club and then eventually became a varsity sport. Um, Ward Ingersoll from Lambertville has been the coach for the last four years. He's done a terrific job, but he hasn't. Had some health issues and had to step down tonight. We are. The replacement that's on here to be hired is a young man named Daven Garvey. Who is a South Hundred graduate, who was a varsity player at South Hundred. And so he is probably the first person to come out of our high school soccer program and become a. Coach of a, of a soccer program. So I, I just think that's kind of a cool thing. A great kid. And so I'm excited to have. Um, any other discussion on the personnel? How long ago was he here? Boy, eighteen, I think, graduated.
Yeah.
Yeah, he had, he, he played four years of soccer in college at Brink Bell. He's got a younger brother, uh, who graduated a couple of years ago. Any other discussion? Then, uh, let's move. Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Jan Beshi?
Yes.
Brian Keats, yes. Have a couple of last. Michael Straps?
Yes.
Megan Warner?
Yes.
And Bachelor?
Yes.
Ronnie Tomarena?
Yes.
Jim Gal.
Yes.
Uh, curriculum and technology, um, Mr. Pete.
I'll take the. Um, so one of the things we talked about was Jane Ellen's report that she presented this evening. Um, we went through those and obviously, you know, talked, discussed each and every one. Um, we also discussed the technology. Vince gave us a pretty good overview of where we are from the district side. Um, specifically at the new elementary school. So I think I mentioned that, um, all of the panels, the flat panels. Seventy-five inch panels have been installed in the elementary school, any part of our classroom spaces and some other states as well. So Vince has been spending a lot of time down there just overseeing all of that, along with some other things. Um, you know, it's been a busy summer with technology in general. Um, and then we talked a lot about dual enrollment specifically. So I think we mentioned it at our last board meeting. Um, we have an F A Q which I was scheduled to go out tomorrow to all of our high school parents. Um, I'll email it and text it. I highly suggest, and I'll continue to kind of drill this point home. We're really entering into an exciting time at the high school where. We partnered with the College of New Jersey, Rowan University, Stockton University, William Patterson University, River Valley Community College. Um, did I miss any others? Is that it? Seton Hall University, right? So you'll see now that there's a whole list of courses. That students starting in ninth grade can take to get college credit, right? And the price per course is a quarter of what it would be if you were actually on the campus. So, um, the Q and A answers a lot of questions about that. But really, we want to get parents in the middle school thinking as they get into eighth grade, what's this pathway? Right? Because the goal would be that our students could come out of high school with at least a full year of college under their belt. Right? Maybe in some circumstances, if they plan it that the right way, they could even have an associate degree when they come out. Right? We all know the price of college and we know how it's continually increased each and every year. This could be a huge advantage for our kids. So, um, I just want to put a plug in for it, take a look at it. There's a long list of all the courses, the names that we offer compared to the names that the college calls in. The grade requirements, which is basically a C or better, the price, the deadlines, um, and just really getting parents to start thinking about that. Uh, as they move through. So that was the last part of our conversation. Break it. Um, just the MOUs.
Okay.
Um, that we have each agreeing with the universities and colleges you see there.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to approve item B then. Martha, thank you. Thank you. Any discussion on item B?
I just want to say that, um, I think another, a good thing that we should, uh, talk about with the dual enrollment is. If you look at class sizes and some of those places and having the benefit of giving the class here.
Yes.
You know, uh, is, is another.
Huge.
Good thing.
Being in a lecture hall with.
Yeah.
With two hundred kids.
Right.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Let's move. Jan Beshi?
Yes.
Brian Keats?
Yes.
Kevin Bogleski?
Yeah.
Michael Straps?
Yes.
Megan Warner?
Yes.
Jennifer Batcher?
Yes.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Ronnie Tomarena?
Yes.
Jim Gal.
Yes.
Our policy committee, Mr. Pence.
Yes, we have a policy committee met on, uh. July first, we have five items for a first read, four items for a second read. On the first read, uh, the first read, the two colleagues and the related procedure, these are, these are mandatory changes. Primarily reorganizations of material and non-material changes. The last two, the policy and the regulation, prevention, treatment of sports-related confessions with head injuries. This is a rewriting of the policy and regulation to align with the provisions of the new guidance. Uh, related, uh, the center search base control or the, their recommendations to reduce the risk. Um, of concussions and the committee did ask for additional information, uh, related to our statistics. When it comes to concussions, we did get those yesterday and we'll talk about those at our next meeting before we come back to the second read. I don't think that necessarily means we're going to change anything in the policy or the regulation. But it's an area of interest and focus. Obviously, we want to make sure we're doing everything we can to, um, protect our athletes. Uh, so that, that's for the first read. Um, sorry, stop right there. Any questions on that?
Why don't we make the motions and then we'll discuss.
So, and then on the second read, we've talked about these previously. These are four changes, mandatory changes. They're related primarily to, uh, the removal of the list of protected categories. And replacing them with an expanded list that is in the New Jersey administrative code. We've talked about this last month, so I'm going to put it in the score when the second read approval.
Excellent. Take that as your motion. Uh, it's a second for that motion.
Second.
Second by Jen, thank you. Um, this is thanks for me. Um, and, uh, so any discussion on the policies? Anyone have questions? You know, the concussion thing is certainly something that's evolving. I mean, that, it's a relative. We only had a policy on that maybe five or six years ago. There's also policies related to, uh, heat acclimation for sports, especially in the fall, right? So the kids come in August, they don't get to, they don't get to do two-a-day practices and the coaches withhold order from you anymore. The way they do.
This is so. I mean, we practice where we all. What we follow.
And although we, we do have tracking, there is.
Yes.
Tracking from year to year, not that that's necessarily significant from the standpoint of infections, but. We're obviously, you know, but I suppose it is because we're looking for keeping the number tight, right? We want to make sure that we have the appropriate training for our staff, which means we need to be in questions as much as possible. That certainly exists as well.
Any other discussion on the policies? Hope the first reads will be available for everybody to look at. And if you do have comments or questions, then please get them to Martha. You know, by mid-August, at least, uh, so that those could be incorporated into the final versions. Um, let's, uh, go along with this then. Brian Keats?
Yes.
Kevin Bogleski?
Yes.
Michael Straps?
Yes.
Megan Warner?
Yes.
Jennifer Batcher?
Yes.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Jan Beshi?
Yes.
Ronnie Tomarena?
Yes.
Jim Gal.
Yes. School and community, Scott Marino, are you comfortable giving a report?
I asked Michael to do the report for me.
So, uh, we met on July sixteenth, uh, virtually. And the vast majority of our time was doing, um, a raw data analysis of our climate survey. I'm really looking at it at top level. Everybody took, uh. Their key takeaways and some initial discussion of, of themes that we saw going across it. And then, uh, Mr. Suze also talked about his takeaways. Uh, and that will be coming a little bit further down the line with a more formal report in September. We also took a look at the dual enrollment, uh, at the Q. And, um, we, we are happy that that is moving out a little bit quicker than, than originally thought. And getting all of that information out there because it is quite significant. Um, and then the final bit of discussion was about the ribbon cup cutting and open house. And that plan continues to evolve. Uh, but we did decide instead of having it as one larger event or a single day, that we would separate them out. And, and really give our students and our parents a little bit more time to spend in the building and, and have a little more access.
Very good. Um, so our next item up is, uh, routine information. We do need a motion to accept the harassment, intimidation and bullying reports. Which was discussed in the executive session next month. Can I have a motion? So then, I'll move by Mr. Spencer, thank you. And the second. Or was it, I'm so sorry. I was looking down.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Straps, thank you. Um, any discussion, I just, yeah, any discussion on the, uh. Report, not that we can really say anything about it, so. Let's just, uh, we'll voice vote all in favor. Aye. If anyone abstaining for this. Okay. Um, we did, uh, as noted in the agenda, we did hold, uh. Fire drills and safety drills at all of the schools in the region as required by the state codes. Um, that brings us to the second period of public comment. Um, again, um, if you have something you'd like to bring before the board, please come up. Tell us your name, the community you're from, and, um, try to keep your comments in around three minutes. If anyone has something they'd like to bring for the board. Seeing no comments in the audience, do we have anything online?
No, just the one to the.
Okay. Um, then I'm going to, uh, I will close the second period of public comment for this evening. Um, we have no need to go into the executive session this evening. So, uh, I will, uh, ask for a motion to adjourn.
So.
No move by Megan. And the second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Badger, thank you. Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Didn't think so. Hey, anyone else say? Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you.